Welcome each of you to our city council meeting for July 18th, 2017. We'll call the meeting to order at 6:00. It's nice to see all of us here today. We have had a number of call-ins. This is great to have all of us here tonight. Could we have a roll call, please?
Mayor Downey.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Kidd.
Here.
Councilmember Brooke.
Present.
Councilmember Collins.
Here.
Councilmember Gase.
I'm here.
Councilmember Meredith.
Here.
Councilmember Weddham.
Here.
Manager McKean.
Here.
Attorney Blor.
Here.
Thank you.
If you allow me, I will lead us in a pledge of allegiance.
(inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If I may, I'd like to invite Patrick McGinnis to come forward. You can use the podium over there. Patrick, it's come to our attention that some special things have happened in your life.
Yes, I am very pleased to announce, it's actually already been announced, but the students of the North Olympic Peninsula Skills Center Cinema and Television Production Class this year was nominated by the National Academy of Television Arts and Sciences for Student Emmy Award. And we have some students, I see Edward Lester in the crowd. We actually were able to go to the regional Emmy Awards in Seattle, I think it was June 3rd, and all the students dressed up in tuxedos went out there and got to mingle with the top television and film elites from not only Washington State, but Oregon, Montana, Alaska. I think there's one more in there too, but the whole Northwestern District. And it was a great experience. We didn't win the award this year, but the nomination in this area is unprecedented. And having gone and got to talk and work with some of those people out there, I'm very confident that we will be able to get more nominations in the future as the program continues. I'm sure everybody is aware that the North Olympic Peninsula Skills Center is closing. And I'm pleased to let everybody know that the Cinema and Television Production Program has actually been picked up by Port Angeles High School. So the program will be continuing on. And this award was actually in the category of live sports broadcasting for the Port Angeles High School homecoming football game that we broadcast live. One of the requirements for the nomination, of course, is that it be broadcast on actual television, which we were able to do through Peninsula Area Public Access. And I just want to thank everybody at Papa TV and, of course, the council and everybody with the city. There's been tremendous support for the program and to get the program to continue. It's really been touching and it's really just a proud moment for me, the instructor of the program, to see these kids recognized in such a prestigious way. So, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. I know that there have been a number of famous actors and actresses who have been nominated prior to winning the Emmy or the Oscar. Even to be nominated is an honor. Okay, that was a good lead into public comment period. I have here on the sheet that's been handed me three names. We'll start with Merrily Smith. Again, three minutes, name, address.
Merrily Smith, PO Box 2498, Port Angeles. I'm actually, I read the proposed ordinance 2343, which is regarding the homeless task force. And I've read a lot of ordinances, I've pretty much read all of them in our archives, and this one doesn't make any sense. I mean, it makes sense what they're trying to get to, but it doesn't make sense where it's placed. Municipal Code 1357.020 is the garbage rates. And although it does say in there that it allows reduced dump fees up to 50%, it goes on with a lot of dump rates. The whereas waive or reduce solid waste fees and whereas encourage nonprofits to provide support for poor or infirm is great, except that I don't understand why we would allow the director to be authorized to enter into a payment plans or voluntary lien agreements with property owners participating in these abatements, which is what they really are. We have an abatement section, which is 8.30.130, which outlines abatement procedures. It seems like this is an either/or, you could either abate or you can go the other way if it was a real flow chart. The abatement procedures make sense. It outlines costs, it outlines notices, it outlines how the people can interact with the city, how the city interacts with the homeowner. It also makes money sense because they outline costs, because liens are costs, you know, it's money. So I would like to see this entire ordinance rewritten so it makes sense, so that it has some measurables here, like if a homeowner begins the process of fixing, of getting their hoarding under control, and they stop, then at what point does abatement step in? I would like to see what, exactly how are payment plans set up? What happens if someone pays or if someone doesn't pay? If they don't pay, then how does it become a lien? Are there other fees added on? I mean, let's put some real administrative things here, because just the way it's written is just, it brings up a thousand questions and doesn't answer anything. So I think it might be the worst ordinance I've ever read, and that's saying a lot. Meanwhile, next, on the payments, I'm not understanding why we're going to pay $135,000 for payment processing, why isn't the people using the credit cards paying a $2 convenience fee? And this sounds really excessive. Thank you.
Thank you, Merrily. Susie Winters.
Thank you for your time. My name is Susie Winters. I live at 215 Woodby Avenue, Port Angeles. I'm the coordinator for the Clallam County Hoarding Task Force. Compulsive hoarding disorder is a mental illness affecting 2% to 5% of the population. Compulsive hoarding can cause fires, unsanitary conditions such as rodent and insect infestations, and other health and safety hazards such as mold, poor air quality, and risk of falling. The Clallam County Hoarding Task Force is a nonprofit corporation. We are a group of volunteers who clean up a home or property. We collaborate with city council and state agencies, as well as private businesses, to assist the client with meeting code requirements. We've been serving our community for a year and have helped nine homeowners. The typical client is a senior citizen on a small fixed income with possessions waist deep, waist-high-deep, non-functioning major appliances, and rodents. Our main goal for the client and surrounding community is that of health and safety. The cost of cleaning up a hoarded property typically is between $10,000 and $50,000. We do our best to keep the cost down by recycling. However, the $0.10 a pound dump fee adds up quickly for those with this mental illness. We ask you to pass the solid waste ordinance revision for private property to help us clean up a property in a timely manner while the client maintains the responsibility for the actual cost. Thank you.
Thank you. George Bergner.
My name is George Bergner. I live at 139 East Alvers Road, Port Angeles, and I'm here representing the Port Angeles Business Association. And I'm here to read a letter of support for the Transportation Benefit District. Five years ago, when the original group got together to begin to make suggestions for crafting this legislation, there were three conditions which would allow us to support it. First, that it would not be property tax-based. Of course, this is a sales tax. Number two, that it have a sunset provision, which is a matter of good government. Every legislation should have sunset clauses. And number three, and very importantly, that the city maintain its level of general fund support for the streets. Otherwise, the revenue raised by this district would not result in the stopping of the decline of our road and alley infrastructure. This morning, the membership of the PABA voted on this letter of support, and I will not read the whole letter, but copies of the letter have been sent to both the mayor and to the city manager. In short, basically, the membership of the PABA strongly supports the creation of this district, and we would very much like to help in any way we can. Thank you.
Thank you, George. That's it for what I have as names on the sign-up sheet. Is there anybody else who would like to take this opportunity to speak? Now, there'll be a second, those of you who are timid here at 6:11 can have a, there'll be a second opportunity for you to address the council later in our agenda. But is there someone who would like to speak before they need to go on to other affairs this evening? Okay, seeing none, let's move on to, on the agenda, to late items. For this or future agendas, anybody on the council have anything they'd like to bring forward? If I might, just very briefly, you recall a couple of weeks ago, we had a short presentation and a correspondence from George, excuse me, Jim Buck, I didn't want to say George, from Jim Buck to talk about scheduling a work session on preparedness relative to a Cascadia subduction zone earthquake. Dan, have you contemplated when we might want to do that?
Yes, we are in the process of looking at our entire schedule for the year. I also met with one council member who asked the same question. It looks like tentatively around September, we will be scheduling a work session to deal with emergency management, and that being Jim Buck, his presentation being one of the topics of that. I also will take this time, I was going to do it under information, but our work schedule that was scheduled for a week from tonight will be canceled. We need more time to prepare for that as we're dealing with some budget issues that we're going through. And so we will be rescheduling that, and we'll be bringing back the rest of the year's work session scheduled to the council at our next meeting, so you can plan it, put it on your calendars. And of course, in that are the planned budget work sessions that we have for the 2018 budget. And actually, as I stated to council, we're really, we're going to have an 18-month budget this time, looking at the remainder of this year, to help us balance the budget next year due to the curtailment of McKinley for that 18-month period. So.
So could I respectfully request that you give Jim a call, let him know that we're kind of, just so he knows that we haven't forgotten him and it's in our radar.
I'll be happy to.
Thank you. Okay, we get to the consent agenda, item E in our agenda. Are there any items on the consent agenda that is before you that you'd want, any member of the council would want to pull for further discussion?
Mr. Mayor, I don't wish to pull it, but I do need to comment on number nine, CSO Phase Two Project Final Acceptance. I am delighted that it, to announce it has come in under budget, 5.35% under budget. It's a $15 million project, the largest public works project in the city of our, history of our city. So thank you, Mr. Fulton, for really excellent work. It's so wonderful to see when contracts come in. And that's a significant amount under budget, I just wanted to point that out. That's really good work.
Mr. Gase, and then Mr. Weddham.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to make a comment. I'm not requesting that it be pulled, but with regards to item number seven, the appointment of the committees to draft for and against statements for the voters' guide, I just wanted to thank the people that put in the request to write those for and against statements. It's good that we have that interest from folks, and I just wanted to, for those that you have, that have asked to be part of that, thank you very much for your interest and your support.
Councilmember Weddham.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to pull number 11 on our consent agenda, the Utility Advisory Committee Citizens at Large/Appointment.
Anybody else? I didn't, Susie?
I do, and I just, a couple, just a couple comments. I know we've got a couple of repairs of pipes that have broken, and so I've asked staff so that hopefully in the future we'll just get a report showing how much we've been paying for broken pipes. And just to keep it upfront, for us to know, hey, if we can start replacing some of these pipes so we can prevent the emergency breaks would be great. And then the second thing that I've talked to staff about as well is the beach nourishment. We've got a lot of sand coming down from now that the dams are down, and so some of those beaches are starting to fill with sand. So we may be able to, in our conversations with maybe ecology and the folks that are requiring this beach nourishment, we might be able to reduce some of that. So, that's two comments.
Okay, I don't see any more hands. Read the consent agenda exclusive of number 11. City Council minutes of June 20, 2017, and July 3, 2017. Expenditure report from June 10, 2017, to June 23, 2017, in the amount of $1,600,592.63. And from June 24, to June 2017, to July 7, 2017, in the amount of $2,957,517.90. Appointment of city representative to the Clallam County Animal Issues Advisory Committee. Water main break emergency repair at Ninth and Ray Street, final acceptance. Equipment maintenance agreement with Clallam County Fire District, number three. Resolution to ratifying declaration of emergency, Marine Drive Sewer. Both of these obviously in reference to what Councilmember Brooke noted a moment ago. Appointment of committees to draft for and against statements for the 2017 Voters' Guide, that's what Dan was referring to. Transportation Benefit District Interlocal Agreement. That leads us to number nine, CSO Phase Two Project Final Acceptance. And I, Deputy Mayor Kidd took words right out of my mouth and brain. Number 10, 2017 Landfill Beach Nourishment Approve Award.
Motion to approve is read.
Second.
Any further comments? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Okay, let's go back to number 11. That's the Utility Advisory Committee, UAC Citizen at Large Appointment.
Great, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wanted to take this opportunity to talk to the community as well as the rest of my council members here. The Utility Advisory Committee is made up of two volunteers, I believe, from Citizens at Large, and we recently had an opening and we advertised to the community. And believe it or not, we actually had three people apply. So that put us in a quandary. So we had three good candidates apply, all wanting to help make a difference in our community. But then we found out in our, I want to call them bylaws, but that's not the right word, within our municipal code, we can only have two people. So we thought out of the box, all of us in the UAC, and we would like to pick up an additional person in that, which I believe staff will be bringing probably to our next meeting in August. And I just wanted to put in a plug for this particular volunteer that wants to help oversee and help make a difference as far as our utilities go. So I just want to say to the community that we're trying our best to bring everyone along with us, open this up so everyone has a clear understanding of all the different rules it takes to operate a city with all the different utilities that we provide. So again, next month, I hope city council will support the UAC recommendation to open this up to a third citizen at large, and I think Paul Collins will make a great addition to our UAC team. Thank you.
Thank you.
With saying that, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make the motion to appoint Mr. Matthias Jarva Guerin as the Citizen at Large Representative to the Utility Advisory Committee to fill the current term, which expires February 28, 2018.
Second up. A motion has been made and seconded to approve the appointment to the Utility Advisory Committee Citizen at Large position. All those in favor?
And I just wanted to thank the Utility Advisor Committee. I was sorry, I was not able to attend that meeting, but I was glad to know that they had quorum, so good work.
Thanks. Thank you. All those in favor of the motion is stipulated, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, if any? Thank you very much. That takes us to item G on our agenda. Your packet is G1, it's the ordinance is not requiring a city council public hearing. It's regarding the solid waste ordinance revision for private property cleanup. Craig, I guess you'll be the one here?
Yeah, so if you're aware, in the solid waste rates ordinance, there is a section which allows the public works director to reduce transfer station fees or waive the fees for a number of volunteer organization nonprofits. And we do that on a regular basis for, and the bulk of the solid waste that's cleaned up in public areas come from the county chain gang, Earth Day Beach Cleanups, the Fiero Marine Life Center does Peabody Creek Cleanup, they can adopt a highway, and there are a number of nonprofits that are allowed, that I'm allowed to either give 50% waivers or eliminate the fees altogether. And it's all under public health, safety, welfare, and enhance the environment of the city. What's not covered is how we can encourage private citizens to clean up their properties. This was brought to my attention with the stand-up of the Clallam County Hoarding Task Force, which you've heard from Susie, has helped a number of private citizens voluntarily working with them to clean up their properties. The task force works with them in setting up a plan on how to go about it, gaining volunteers to assist the homeowners, and usually they're elderly, they're infirm, or they have issues that prevent them from really taking the job on themselves. We've talked many times that recycling is really a key, because they do have a lot of metals, a lot of woods that can be recycled and sold, creating profits within, then can be used for disposal of the other debris that they have on their lot. So noting that we did not have some kind of mechanism to incentivize private property owners to voluntarily step forward to improve their properties, which again enhances the livability of the city as a whole, we developed this ordinance change in the rate ordinance along with the other rate reductions or fee waivers to make some kind of mechanism available to assist these citizens. And we're, through either payment plans, if they do have financial resources that can be sold off to, over time, create the revenue to pay the tipping fees off, or many of the, in working with the Hoarding Task Force, you get agreement from the property owner in conjunction with coordination with the Hoarding Task Force to put liens on the property, because they just don't have, and they never will really have, the resources to pay for the tipping fee. So the city, or the city utility will be able to recoup those costs at a later date when the property is sold. Understand from comments that there are concerns that the ordinance is under the section on rates, where we have the other fee waivers and fee reductions, and there were questions of should it be under the abatement section, which I have not looked at, so I really can't comment on that change that's been put forward. But I open it up to any questions you might have, and we do have a representative from the Hoarding Task Force if the council might want to address their, how they go about doing their business and getting these private citizens to voluntarily clean up their properties.
I see Mr. Gase, do you have a comment or question?
Just a question. I see that the Utility Advisory Committee took a look at this, and I was wondering if Councilmember Weddham could give some insight to your overview.
And then Mr. Collins, after Mr. Weddham.
This came out of a UAC decision to recommend that council would adopt, but my prepared words for this is, I see this as a great tool for staff to help these property owners that volunteer to engage with the city. So we're going to give, I'd like to give the city staff the tools to engage with volunteers that want to admit and come, you know, come forward. The big thing here is talking about public health. So we need to, we need to do what we can to help that. Thank you.
Mr. Collins?
Well, I would just point out that there are a lot of ordinances in the city with, regarding codes and permits, and inevitably, we put the fees all into the fee structure. So it's easier to change those fees instead of changing the whole ordinance, because there's a myriad of ordinances related to fees. So I think that's the rationale, and I think it's well-placed.
Okay, good. And council?
Yeah, and so I thoroughly think this is a great idea. I support it 100%. I think what staff's doing, I think, is wonderful. I was caught up kind of, because I don't really know that much about where it should possibly be, and if there is an abatement section in our code that actually details some of the administrative issues of this, I don't know if it's worthwhile looking at it, because it doesn't show in here exactly what the lien would look like and what happens if they don't pay, even though they voluntarily said they would pay. So if there's questions like that, then it may already be addressed in a different section. It might be better if it got moved there, but I don't know. So I don't know whether staff might feel comfortable saying, well, let's take a look if there's a better section for this, or not. I do understand that this is a good place right now, because it's something that's under the control, you know, it's, you know, through Public Works, but I don't have the answer for that. But I'm wondering whether it might be worthwhile, I think it's a great idea, and I think we all support it, but where does it belong, because it's missing some of the administrative pieces that go with it? Maybe it'd be worthwhile looking at that.
So one thing we can do, this is the first reading. It's an ordinance, so we can take a look at it with, based on the comments tonight, and we'll come back to the council with the recommendation, one way or the other, and why. But again, it's the council's decision, but we can, again, look at that with an eye on it based on tonight's comments.
Wonderful.
Point of order, where does it say it's the first reading? Oh, first, I'm sorry, sorry, got it.
G.
Yeah, G1, got it, okay.
Council, I'd like to add a few comments as well. I think it's really important and valuable for council to know and understand that on an annual basis, we have a total of $500 budgeted to this line item. That doesn't go very far when you're looking at the number of code compliance cases that we get overall across the board at the city. Keep in mind, we do not dedicate any resources to that at this point. That is a big issue. It is a priority issue for our community members. We hear about it daily. What this ordinance truly does is it gives us a course outside of the nuisance ordinance to proceed with someone who's willing to be proactive with cleanup, that really takes away from the drain on staff time that gets involved. We greatly appreciate the nonprofits that have stepped up to really take care of some of these private property issues that are occurring, and when they can be proactive and take care And when they can be proactive and take care of these issues for us, it saves us a great deal of time relative to court cases that we have to put forward that take a great deal of documentation and due diligence before we even get to that stop. And literally, a compliance case, if we do not have a cooperative property owner under the nuisance code, it can take us over a year to the point where we actually get to take court action. So to have some steps that we can take beforehand, it's very useful to staff, and we do think it's something that would be appropriate to implement.
Okay, Deputy Mayor.
I totally agree. We have complaints, citizen complaints about neighbors and neighborhoods that, and it's so wonderful to hear from the Hoarding Task Force that people are going out to actually help these people. When you help those people, you're helping the entire neighborhood and our city as well. So I'm very grateful for this, and I'm glad we're moving in a positive direction with this. Thank you.
Brad?
I just wanted to agree with Councilman Brooke that where we're dealing with policies or procedures, that should go into the various sections, whether it's building code or abatement code or whatever. And I think we could bring that back. We do a periodic review of those, and maybe this triggers the need to look at that. I have no problem with that. But I think we should move forward with this ordinance.
Good. Unless there's further comments, let me read, this will be the first reading. This will, matter will be, reappear on our agenda for our first meeting in August, which is, I think, August 1st. The ordinance of the City of Port Angeles, Washington, amending 13.57.020 regarding solid waste rates and cleanup of nuisance properties. So thank you all for your comments. Contracts and purchasing. First this evening is the BioSolids Dewatering Project, Project WW0205, seeking approval for an award sent packet as J1.
So council, this is the award of the construction contract for the BioSolids Dewatering Project in simple terms. It's the removal of our antiquated and failing belt press and installing of a modern screw press. The screw press is from a local manufacturer, which has the benefit of easy delivery and future maintenance over time. The contract is to a company in Aberdeen, Washington for 1.2 million. The total of design, construction, and administrative charges still remains under budget for the project. One thing I'll note that, you know, at some, during some contract awards, we put aside a certain amount of money for change orders. That is built into the contract already. Minor changes, 75,000. That's why you don't see it as a separate line item in the budget, because it's already built in. And we've, I think we briefed the council several times and the UAC on the design of the project. Then we briefed on the pre-purchase of the screw press, both at UAC and at the council. That is also worked into the contractor's price at 417,000, so that's already built into 1.2 million, and they will take possession of our contract and use that. With that, I will take any questions you might have, given that we've briefed the design, the pre-purchase, and now finally, the award of the contract.
I just want to make a comment that I know that these numbers are large. The good thing about this is that we are actually taking care of our infrastructure so that we don't get into issues of having to deal with things at the last minute. We are actually being proactive about updating some of our infrastructure. So yes, it's a large amount, but I think in the long run, it'll save us money. So thank you. Thank you for staff.
Councilman Wydom?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd just like to say that this is a unique situation at our wastewater treatment plant. We've got to keep it up and running while this contractor gets in and makes an actually actual swap-out of one part of very critical infrastructure at our wastewater treatment plant. So no, I support this wholeheartedly. It needs to be done. We can't find parts for the existing piece of equipment. Thank you.
And I would comment that, as it was briefly referred to by our Public Works Director, the manufacturer of this equipment is a local, local business, somewhat obscure, actually. I chide them every once in a while for being so obscure. FKC is the company locally that will actually be a key component of this project. So local folks who live here will be in, working with this project in a very important way. I see no other hands, so.
So Mr. Mayor, I'd make a motion that we approve and authorize the city manager to award and sign a construction contract with Roglands Incorporated for the BioSolids Dewatering Project, Project WW0205, for a contract amount of 1,203,119.68, including applicable taxes, and to make minor modifications to the contract.
Second. Okay, a motion has been made and seconded. Further comments or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, everyone. That takes us to J2, the Paymentis Contract for Credit Card Purchasing, Seeking Approval. This is packet J3.
This contract is actually a replacement for an existing contract we have with a credit card processor. It is slated to actually reduce costs and build an infrastructure that will allow us to provide better services in the future, although it's not addressed in the memo. And Trina Nevaral will describe this a little bit for you.
Okay. So SunGuard, now Superiorion, is discontinuing their housing of the credit card data, and they're moving forward to trying to move to a cloud-based system where they don't store the information on our financial software. They are moving toward other third-party vendors. So we are, they are retiring this portion of their, of the finance software that we have next year. So we need to move to something different. Paymentis is already working with a bunch of clients from the SunGuard, now Superiorion, and they already have the structure in place, so it'll be very seamless for us to move to this new software. And we feel that we've negotiated a very good contract that has the potential to reduce our credit card fees. So is there any questions regarding this?
Yes, Councilwoman Brooke?
I do. The only question I have was, have you guys considered, because we're all paying for this contract for the credit card, and it was brought up, someone mentioned, well, are we subsidizing credit card users versus the folks who don't pay by credit card? So I'm just wondering if that's something that, it is a convenience to pay by credit card, so should there be a charge to the people who are using the credit card, whether it's a dollar, you know, the convenience charge, so that the folks who are paying by cash are not subsidizing the credit card users?
We are hearing that some entities have tried to move to convenience fees and have experienced their collections having their more delinquencies. So it's kind of a trade-off. You could, you could go that route, and then you might have non-payment that you experience, more activity with collections from our staff. So we feel that we've negotiated a reduction in the fee comparative to in the past, and we also are moving towards other payment options for our customers. So we're in the process of testing other payment options like auto pay, which is a much more reduced fee than the credit cards. So there's more to come in conjunction with this contract. There's a lot of options with Paymentis with interactive voice recognition. We are able to divert calls from our staff that work at the front counter, so they can work on connects or disconnect, or connects for utilities, which are time-consuming, and move them to paying their utility bill over the phone, which is a more secure process for our customers. So they're not providing their data over the phone, and it's more compliant with industry standards. So there's more to come in the future that we feel like will benefit our customers, but we'd like to maintain the structure that we currently have because we feel that our collections will continue to be low, or delinquencies are actually pretty low in comparison.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Councilman Wydom?
Yeah, so I think of utilities immediately too, but in fact, wouldn't this be any financial transaction someone, if they wanted to engage with the city, could use a credit card, for example, permit fees?
Yes. A large portion is utility-related, but there are other options. There are other payments that we will take for, you know, parks project or parks programs, building permits, any other payment.
If we'll take a dollar, we'll take your credit card.
Certainly.
For whatever the fee may be. That's my point I wanted to push. The other thing too is because of the, all of the utilities that we provide, I'd like to look at that further and see that if, you know, we could split this cost up, because that has been the intent of the council to date. This current council is that we do not subsidize other rate payers or other classes for the utilities that we provide. But again, I think any financial transaction someone wants to do at the city, it's a dollar, it's greenbacks or a credit card. So we have to think of it that way also. Thanks.
I wanted to say that, clarify that these amounts are allocated back to the utilities based on the usage, so that's part of our allocation process that we go through. So it doesn't, you know, we aren't charging parks and rec an amount that's not equivalent to the use that they would get out of the system. So all of those things are taken into consideration when we do allocations. We look at credit card payments, we look at cash, we look at the cash processing, how many receipts we get of each type when we do our allocations. And although you only see a number at the end of the day, when you're looking at the budget, all of those things are calculated within that number, so.
Okay, thank you, all of you. So I would seek a motion if there.
Mr. Mayor, I move to, make sure I've got the right one, move to approve and authorize the city manager to sign a contract with Paymentis for performing credit card merchant account services.
Second. Okay, a motion has been made and seconded. Any further commentary, questions? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay. That takes us to council reports. Let me start on my left, Councilwoman Brooke.
Okay, so I know I met with staff. I know that in the future, we'll hopefully take a look at our sign ordinance so that we can make it a little stronger. Deputy Mayor Kidd and I went to the AWC conference, and I'll give a report next time because I didn't bring my notes. And that's about it. Oh, and apologies to whoever did the farmer's market, because I missed that one too. Sorry.
Councilmember Meredith?
Not a whole lot, I just, you know, it's good to see a lot of people out. There's a lot of traffic in town. There are a lot of tourists coming in. We were at a baseball tournament over the weekend, and there was a gentleman, he was an umpire getting in his car, and he asked where we were from, and we said Port Angeles. And he started to walk away, and he turned back around, and he says, well, we're from Yakima, and we're thinking about coming to the Dungeness Crab Festival. And I thought it was kind of interesting that, you know, you don't know who tells who, who tells somebody else, and so on down the line, that, you know, these folks end up in town spending their tourist dollars here. So that was good to hear. We were over in essentially Fife at the time, so.
Deputy Mayor Kidd?
Yes, in the last couple of weeks, I've had a couple of wonderful events. I represented the city at the change of guard at the new commander at the Coast Guard Air Base, and I hope we would invite him to actually come to the city council so everyone can meet him. I think we need to just make, make sure that we continue that strong partnership with our airbase, and it was a wonderful event. And then on July 1st, I hosted a group of about 25 people from Port Angeles to go over to Canada. We were invited by a council member of the Victoria City Council and joined their Canada Day celebration, and they announced, there were about 5,000 people there on the lawn of the legislature. We made this big maple leaf flag that was on BBC and in the local, and in the national newspapers in Canada. And they announced twice that their sister city, Port Angeles, was in attendance. We were there with the delegations from Japan and New Zealand, and we were escorted to a spot. So they knew we were there, and they invited us, and it was just a marvelous day. So another good day in Port Angeles and with our friends in Victoria.
Councilmember Gase?
I would just like to make a comment that over the years, it's very common that we all, as council members, hear from our citizens about workings of the city. In my new capacity with the port, I now start hearing comments from the citizens with regards to port efforts, but I was really pleased to get some comments that actually encumbered both the actions of the port and actions of the city in a favorable way, and that was with regards to the recent collaboration with the port on removing the trees that had been growing up into the glideslope area. And there was just general comments that, gee, it's nice to see the two governmental organizations working good together and for the betterment and positive things for our city. So I would look forward to lots of continued positive efforts in those regards.
Councilmember Wydom?
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Mayor. So I'd like to report to the community. Last week, I attended, as council members, we sit on a lot of different boards, all of us do, and the time you can devote to these different advisory boards, as well as different committees too, is endless. So last week, I attended a joint, it's called a SWAC, and what it stands for is Solid Waste Advisory Committee. So we had our first-ever joint meeting with Jefferson County last Wednesday. We met at Gardner Center out there at the community center. We even had a representative from State Ecology show up. We had, I'm guessing, close to 40 people that attended. We've got representation from the county here, the cities, Squim and Port Angeles, folks from elected and staff both also attended. Jefferson County, of course, there's county, and then the city of Port Townsend that attended. Great meeting. It was definitely a meeting of the minds. When I got my chance to speak to everyone, I told my group, I said that we've met our match as far as Jefferson County goes, as far as their recycling programs. We shared some different ideas, ones that we've been playing around with as Clallum County SWAC. We've talked about pulverizing glass so that we don't have to dispose of it. They have a hammer mill that makes this stuff as smooth as sand, and I don't, maybe the color might be the only way you could tell the difference between sand when it comes out at the other end of the hammer mill. So we're looking at ways of doing that. Another thing that we shared with the group from Jefferson County is the asphalt roofing. We've been looking at that also for a number of months now. We're We're trying to find some joint things that we can work on. Jefferson County did share some Sharps recycling programs that they have enacted over there. So, it was a great thing to get together, exchange some ideas, and see what we can work on in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. And Brad?
Just a couple items. One, I'm glad to be here. I ran into a reporter over the weekend, and he only recognized me as the voice of Brad Collins, and so he was happy that I was also alive. And I also, the other night, had dinner with Bob Cross, the former mayor of Victoria, and we talked about the relationship between the two cities. And I think we need to energize a little more right now to, you know, renew some joint meetings with them. So, I was glad to hear your report, Deputy Mayor. Bob's doing well, by the way, and still thinks fondly of our initiating that. In that same vein, I'm not sure who I have to arm wrestle, but the Squamal Rib Fest will be coming up in September, I believe, and we probably need to send a judge. If you haven't done that already, you probably have a leg up on whoever else wants to go who's done it before. So, be thinking about that. And then, lastly, I'm looking forward to the farmer's market, August 5th. It's the only month that I'm doing this year. It's not a cold-weather month, so I get to enjoy one month, anyway, out there in the breezes. So, I'm happy to be back.
Two things quickly. I did participate in the July 4th parade as an entry, but my comment is more... And I don't... Is anybody here from the chamber? Mark? I don't see Mark Abshar here. But I want to commend those that organized the July 4th activities in the community. I thought the... Overall, the experiences were just wonderful. The parade route was filled with people, particularly downtown. I had a wonderful experience. And then, on a very... Briefly, on a very personal note, I just want to express my appreciation to members of the council and any and all that... For tolerating and understanding my... I'm not quite as active as I was, but I'm doing my best, and I'm glad to be here. Really glad to be here. With that said, let's go to item L, City Manager's Report.
Thank you, Mayor and council. We do have some items I want to bring to your attention in the packet. One is our police department's year-end report. I know they put a lot of time into that, and there's some really good, interesting information in that. And I'm sure Brian will be able to answer any questions, if you have any, as you're going through that report. We also have a copy of our 2016 auditor's report that's in your packet. I know some of you attended the exit conference, and of course, the city came out of that with the Clean Bill of Health, and that was a really good report. And we also have the Public Works Quarterly Report. A couple items, action items. Yes, I will give Jim Buck a call this week and connect with him. And also, on beach nourishment, we'll try to find out if... I know there have been some studies done along that area, and if we can find that there has been some nourishment along that same area, that would be enough to discuss that with our permitting agency, to see if we can revise that, the amount of beach nourishment that we provide or eliminate it altogether. So, great comment on that, and we'll follow up on it.
Good. Thank you.
Okay. That takes us to a second public comment period. I don't... City Clerk is... No names. And with time remaining, anybody who would like to come to the podium here, and our second public comment period will begin now.
Mary Lee Smith, PO Box 2498. I'm kind of confused by the comment that by having a service fee for people who pay with credit cards to a third-party vendor, that it causes more delinquencies. I pay a lot of utility bills online. I have houses in here and in California. And I know in California, that East Bay Mud, which is our water supplier, charges me a $3.50 convenience fee for paying with an E-check. And PG&E, which is Pacific Gas and Electric, which is all of Northern California, charges a $1.35 convenience fee. I know that Woodinville charges $3.95 for their transaction fee, up to $350, and they charge more for larger amounts. It's pretty common. Even my mortgage company charges me a convenience fee if I pay with an E-check. So, I... When I was looking at $135,000, comes out to about $16 per person per year, or about just under a buck fifty for each of us every month. I don't understand why I, who I've always paid with a check, why I have to underwrite a credit card fee. It doesn't make sense to me, and we have high enough utility rates as it is. So, I'm just complaining. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody else? Please, come forward.
110110, East 13th Street. In the Port Angeles newspaper this morning, there's an article on page A3. The title is "Six Area Wastewater Treatment Plants Are Given State Award." The definition for getting this award is "full compliance with its National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System," acronym to an NPDES. Among these six are Clallam Bay Sewerage Treatment Plant, Squim Water Reclamation Facility, Clallam Bay Correction Center, sewage treatment, Port Townsend, BioSolids Program. Port Angeles is not in this list. Being compliant means just a recognition, or does it actually mean fulfilling a service that is essential and important to the community? Not fulfilling the requirement, does that mean that there's a deficit? I know nothing about what the sewage thing's about, so I'd just like to have a response of what does it mean for a community to have this recognition given? Does it signify a deficit if there's no compliance?
Okay. I don't know.
We're really... Could we have that offline?
I can provide feedback on that now or later.
I think we'll... Let's have you guys do this offline. If you could stick around for a moment or two. Generally, as a rule, during these public comment periods, we... It's not intended to have what, in essence, be a public meeting, so...
But this is not a comment, it's a question.
Well...
I appreciate the question, but I'd like to... Get us an answer.
Now?
No, not now. During their appropriate time.
Right. Immediately following the meeting, if you can stick around, we have the Public Works Director, a member of the UAC, a member of the council, are happy to answer the question.
It just... It was one test back in June of 2016 that was slightly over the requirement, and missing one test eliminates you from the competition, but it was one test, and we just slightly over the test requirement, and so that one missed test dropped us off. That was the only thing.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I have a feeling of being perplexed in a response to your comment, that public input time is not a dialogue, but it makes the environment kind of sterile here when it's necessary to have a response. And so, I'm just making a statement.
Okay. Point well taken.
Very well taken.
Gentleman in the back, I had his hand up. Here he comes.
Good day, esteemed council people and Port Angelins. I'm new to your community, and I'm happy to be here, just like the good mayor. Very pleased to be here. I received an extremely warm reception from all the residents here, and I'm glad I chose it very decisively as the place I would retire for my second career.
Please state your name and your address.
I'm sorry. My name is Daniel Myrick, and my address would be General Delivery, Port Angeles. I suppose I occupy all of the area. I wanted to speak... I was compelled to speak. I didn't come to speak. I was interested in knowing what my new town was interested in, what was going on, what were their concerns. But I heard a concern about health, and I also heard some concerns... A lot of concerns about money. And I heard some concerns about people as well. And I would like to draw attention to the fact that the chronically homeless... It's a very unpalatable subject that I'm choosing, and many or some are not interested in it, but a great many are. They're suffering a social warfare by us, and it constitutes an effort to commit genocide, quite frankly. By depriving a person one of their human rights to exist, we are stating we want them dead and not sharing the same space-time with us. Now, I became aware very quickly... I've been here nine days today, that there was some fear amongst the chronically homeless, that a gang of vigilantes is the word, is cowardly beating them in their sleep. Now, they're the most vulnerable part of our communities. They equal 1% and less of our community, showing that they're... It's an easily rectifiable situation, also shows it's constructed intentionally. And so, in my ten-year tenure, as being the least man in my own native culture of America, I recruit a lot of knowledge about why we are responsible and why we create this condition. And so, I hear a lot of people say they're interested in what creates it, and I'd like to invite anybody from the council, a not-for-profit, or any individuals especially, that are interested in this intentional dialogue that we're having with our fellow extended members of our commune, of our community. And hobaway@yahoo.com is my email. I invite even the hooligans, the vigilantes, to contact me. I'd like to be a liaison in some way. Homeless 12 countries, four continents. I intentionally came to study this. So, if I can help in any way, I'd love that.
Thank you very much. Anybody else? Okay. Well, that wraps up our meeting this evening. I'll seek a motion of adjournment. Second. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All of you have a lovely evening, what remains of it. Thank you for being here.